We're going to call the meeting to order. We're going to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under the law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder that the meeting is being recorded by Norton Media. If anybody else is recording, we just need to know that, too. All right, so we'll start with Project 351. Mr. Goldstein.
Sure. Well, so as you know, every year, you know, I come to talk to this community about something that's very near and dear to my heart. And so it's something I've been doing for quite a long time now. And so Project 351, for those who don't know, is the largest service organization of its kind in the country. And essentially, the goal of the organization is to train a whole new generation of leaders, service leaders. And so every community in the Commonwealth, all 351, hence the name Project 351, chooses an eighth grade ambassador. This year, our ambassador is Courtney Bailey, who I think is coming. So she, you know, she should be here. So in any case, so Courtney was our ambassador this year. And, you know, one of the things that we've also taken on this year is we've also taken on a new initiative through the organization called the Playbook Initiative, which I'm going to call forward Benson and Vanessa to talk a little bit about because that is, you know, one of the big things that we're doing right now, so.
So we actually had our, so the Playbook Initiative was in partnership with the Boston Celtics in Mass Association of Superintendents. And it started in 2016, the playbook roster. The idea behind it is kind of a social playbook, right? So like this playbook kind of has a bunch of scenarios that middle schoolers, and this was written by middle schoolers. It's situations that they might encounter regarding discrimination, race, ethnicity, religion, orientation, identity, all those different types of things. And it kind of, it's a workshop around equipping them with social skills, kind of how to deal with those situations and how to be upstandards, not just bystanders. You kind of teach them and empower them how to be kind of like a leader. And like when you are an upstander in those situations, how do you tailor it to your strengths as a leader, right? A quiet leader, a loud leader. But we had a great time last week. And right here, actually, the 30 of our middle school student leaders, we did a very, you know, a great conversation. We learned to have, you know, something to say. That's something that bears value. And we did a little icebreaker saying, you know, stand if you've ever been silenced in your life, right? We kind of made it known to them that during this workshop, they're not going to be silenced, that they're going to be heard. Their experiences will be heard. So our next workshop is actually scheduled for February 15. We have our day of action in March.
So, yeah, and so one of the things that we've also, and I just found out about this this evening. In fact, Benson knows, Vanessa does not. I was contacted by the executive director of Project 351, Carolyn Casey, and she actually asked our school group, our playbook initiatives this year, to go to the ARVAC Center on February 12, along with other schools yet to be determined, and do training with the Celtics and with the organization that day. So we are going to be getting permission slips out to all our students. And we're going to be going on February 12, on Monday, to go do that. So we're very much looking forward to that, needless to say. It was very fortuitous to get that call earlier today. So that's something that we're definitely looking forward to. But the person of the hour is Courtney Bailey.
Hi.
I introduced you on tour. So she is our ambassador for this year. And so, you know, she could probably tell you a little bit about how her day went and the course of the sequence of the day and how important the five impressions were every day, so.
It was amazing. I was so nervous, like going, and I was kind of stressing out. But I got there and I met Benson, and he made me feel really welcomed. I didn't know I was going to be in a group with people, but they were all super welcoming and so sweet. And I just like, after the day all went, it was a very long day, but just I felt so good inside. And I just like felt like I did something and I made a change.
So what kind of service did you do that day?
We went to the.
Labyrinth.
Yeah. And I was giving out flowers. I mean, I did stain my shirt. It didn't really come out, though. But it was so fun, and I just loved like seeing people's smiles on their face. It made me feel so good inside, and I just loved helping out.
So, and then, as you know, and so you've probably played with through previous years, so spring service is a project that you're going to be spearheading for the school here, which is a code drive, which helps to benefit Cradles to Crayons. And so that's something that both of these folks, to my right, also participated in, and, you know, that was a great success. So we're looking forward to continuing that tradition as well. So lots of good stuff happening. We're very fortunate that, you know, this is an organization that, you know, likes what we're doing here, very much appreciates our efforts, you know, toward that end. And so very fortunate to have, you know, some great people by my side here who can help me to put that mission forward. You know, become leaders such in their own right, and that's really what it's all about. Because it's not about the adults, it's about these folks becoming leaders and, you know, moving forward and, you know, passing that torch forward to do that good stuff, so. So, yeah, that's pretty much it on my end here, you know. And are there any questions that you folks have for us in regards to, you know, Playbook Initiative, as far as, you know, the organization is concerned, what we've been doing, that sort of thing?
I don't have any questions. I feel like we've been hearing about this for so long now, and it's kind of nice to see, you know, some of the kids. I know Benson, we met you in middle school, and here you are now, still advocating and working. And it's just great to see that new students are getting involved. And keep making Norton proud, you guys. It's awesome to see. Thank you so much.
Thank you, yeah. They do a great job all around, but don't be mad at me saying that.
If I could just mention something. I also just wanted to recognize Mr. Goldstein, who, oh, is that what you want him to say to you, Mr. Higgins? I know I shared this information with the committee, but.
So I want to congratulate Mr. Goldstein. On that day that they went and did the service thing, Mr. Goldstein was selected as a 2024 Service Hero for his years of dedication and commitment to Project 351 that empowers young people to lead positive, ambitious, and powerful change. Mr. Goldstein has been, it's 14 years in existence now. And for 13 years, he's been deeply involved, not just with picking the nominee from our school, but going there and actually modeling the service that we're trying to get these young people to kind of really embrace and carry forward. He was nominated by Benson. And I want to read Benson's nomination write-up that was printed in this book right here, along with some other people that were recognized. Ronnie Goldstein is one of the good guys. An exemplary educator, mentor, advocate, and champion on behalf of every student, every day. His odometer reveals one of his most admirable traits. Ronnie always shows up. Every event, summit, focus group, service day, opportunity for an ambassador or an alumni, and a chance to advocate for Project 351. Ronnie is there. Thoughtful and passionate and ready to go over and above to do whatever it takes for our mission and our movement. This year, that includes bringing the Playbook Initiative to Norton, which he obviously got a big recognition where we were selected today, in partnership with Alumni Leadership Council member Benson Chang. Benson reflects, Mr. Goldstein often says that the most important investment you make is where you choose to invest your time and heart. And the one thing he'll forever be invested in is the mission, hope, and the people of Project 351. He's more than just an educator to our Norton community and 351 family. He's a beloved friend and someone who has been invaluable and valuable to me as a role model and mentor. Great job, Ron. I saw this that day, the event was going on, and I kind of, I'm, you know, watching what happens and comes up on the 351 hashtag during the day. And I saw his name up on this huge sign, the Service Hero Award, and the tweet went out. I almost tweeted back in my style, overdue. Because I know all the years of work, but I resisted. And I just can grab that and hold on to it. So I'm glad we got the opportunity to do that here. And a great run of nominees that he selects. He's good at selecting them.
I agree, that's a great idea, so.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pretty powerful letter. Yeah, that's awesome.
I was, I was absolutely surprised that day. I had no idea that that was happening. And so I was pretty stunned that, you know, the Channel 4, DPC, they're the ones who, as a media partner for the organization, and Miss Hughes was there. And so, you know, here I am, and she's like standing next to me. So what do you have to say? I'm like, I, I know. It's not something here that I was ready for. And so, you know, I think my exact words are right. Usually I'm not a loss, I'm not in a loss of words. However, I kind of am right now, so, so, yeah, it was very nice.
Benson can keep a secret, too.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I had no idea, so it was much, much, much appreciated, so.
Well deserved. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right, so we'll go on to the minutes of the January 11 meeting. Did you guys all have a chance to look at them? Anybody have any comments or concerns? You guys good? All right, so is there a motion to approve the minutes for the January 11, 2024 meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, Lawrence, that's me. All right, so I have reviewed and approved the following warrants, school expense warrants, January 11, 2024, And school payroll warrants, January 11, 2024, May wish to enter them into public record. Next is the student rep updates.
All right. For the YAL students are beginning to get super excited for the HAYPTO Boosteron Fund Run fundraiser. Free registration started on January 10. The Boosteron on-campus personnel of Cosmic Chris and Katie Kat are here each day working with staff and going into every classroom daily for incentives for our students to help fundraise for our playground and review the character tray of the day. The big kickoff day was yesterday, on Wednesday, January 24. Chris and Kat got the students super pumped with videos from Booster and their new partners Do Perfect. Daily, the students watch a video which incorporates excellent messages for students about character and shows them how they, they too might be able to be a world changer for good. The Boosteron is happening January 24 through February 2, with the Glow Fund Run happening in the gym on Friday, February 2 throughout the day. This is the big fundraiser for HAYPTO that they do for the year, which will help us pay off the new playground structures we purchased last year. We are still working to pay them off. The kids have little incentives each day to earn fun privileges throughout the week and half. And then the big incentive of raising $20,000 will be for Mr. Gagan and Mr. Valwell to do something fun and a little crazy, which will include getting slammed for the students. In past years, we've kissed pigs, kissed exotic animals, including a kangaroo, and last year they dueled as Yale Knights. We can't wait to see what we're going to have to do this year. And also the LGN. Our students and staff have been enjoying the Wellness Committee's addition of Tasty Tippets to our morning video announcements. Twice a week, a special guest star shares the benefits of eating fruits and vegetables to increase energy and focus and help our community to live a healthy life. So far, we've included Nurse Courtney, PE Wellness Teacher, Mrs. Kenny, and Mr. Higgins' dad, Tim. Our third graders are recording the latest Tasty Tippets to be included in the future. We have seen an increase in some of the interest in fruits and vegetables during lunch each day. Some students are trying some healthy snacks for the very first time.
All right, and then for the high school, this week we had midterms. Thanks to you guys, we were able to get half days for the remainder of the week. Lots of great things are happening at the high school. We are wrapping up first semester this week and look forward to new classes next semester, which starts on Monday. One of the things that students most look forward to are field trips, that classes take part as their curriculum, career exploration opportunities, or club activities. In the next month or so, we will have field trips going to iRobot, a sports marketing conference, the Atlantic State Preparators Union, Beacon Hill, LGN, and JCS Science Days, and Bridgewater State University City Lab. Thanking to the teachers and club leaders that planned these wonderful experiences for our students. And then the JCS. This year, artist in resident, artist in resident John Weiner began his work with students, staff, and parents yesterday. Kids are having an amazing time putting together what should be a beautiful mosaic mural and other mosaic pieces for the JCS library. It should be done just before February break, and we welcome the school committee to the unveiling sometime in late February. Also, just because, just before the break, the JCS SBO is collaborating with Norton Outdoor Center to drive up a Starry Night program on February 14, where students and families will meet on the big field and see the stars with guidance from WIM facility. All right, thank you, guys. That's all we have for you.
Thank you. Anybody have a thing? Thanks, guys. All right, presentation of vote on global education trips to Costa Rica, Ireland, Scotland. That's Kiefer.
Mr. Cersei joined me. He's our chaperone, our administrative chaperone for the Thailand trip.
He had to get shots last week.
I did.
I get special ones because I'm a bull.
I was thinking of totally.
At your age.
At my age. So as you know, we have two exciting trips coming up. We have a service trip to Thailand in April, this April, with 17 students headed there with us. And then we recently announced the Greece tour trip, which was really popular with students. We had, I think, over 50 students sign up immediately. That'll be in 2025. So Ms. Tanelli, Dr. O'Neill, and I are brainstorming the possibilities for the next phase of trips and working with EF to do that and determine, or are hopeful to determine a plan for going to Costa Rica in the summer of 2025, and then to Ireland and Scotland, a single trip to Ireland and Scotland in 2026, either during February or April break. So the summer decision was made. We haven't had a summer trip in a while based on the fact that if we see lower numbers of signups for service trips, it gives us more of an opportunity to potentially pair with another school because the school vacation cycle nationally is a little bit different in different regions. So EF tells us that there's more opportunity. If you recall, we had a Dominican trip. Nine students signed up that didn't end up running because we couldn't do that during April break. But during the summer gives them a little more flexibility to make those arrangements, so. Yeah, we're just hoping to continue the tradition and have your support for that.
So for the Ireland and Scotland trip, you'll notice that there is an optional extension on that one that goes to 10 days. And the cost was pretty nominal in, like, looking at what the seven-day cost versus the 10-day cost. So we are proposing the 10-day trip for students. This is something we've never been there before. You know, we've mainly, mainly done, you know, mainland Europe. So we're really excited about the opportunity for students to check out the Ireland, Ireland and Scotland tour. And as Dr. Kiefer mentioned, the Greece trip was so incredibly popular with our students that we actually had to add a second bus. So we had a waitlist. We had about 15 students that were on the waitlist. And finally, we decided just to open it up. And so we have two busloads of students that are going to Greece next April. And just to, you know, for background for everyone out there, and I know Justine is new to approving the trips. I think you did it for the last.
Yeah.
You know, there is always a central office administrator that travels with the students. Number one, we think it's really important to have somebody else there that can stay behind if an emergency happens, that, you know, has the ability to, you know, support teachers and make a difficult call if anything were to come up. And as you know, working with EF, they just have incredible customer service in terms of safety, no matter where you are in the world. Their presence is in so many countries. And they make it really easy and exciting for the students to travel. So we hope that you will consider these trips.
Anybody have any questions?
No, I mean, I've had, you know, my oldest or my middle child was signed up for a trip that got canceled for COVID. My youngest one last year. My youngest has signed up for next year. I'm envisioning a discussion when I get home. As I mentioned to Dr. Kiefer, these are much in a lifetime experiences, but they, they are pricey. But having been to Scotland myself when I was a teenager, it is a phenomenal country. It's a wish list to go back for me, so maybe I'll just have to chaperone on that one. And get back to my Irish roots as well. But, I mean, these are, actually, I don't. You know, I think, you know, these are great experiences for kids. It is, as we mentioned, it's a school-sponsored trip, so all the discipline does carry. I don't recall ever having an issue on any of these trips in the past, major issues. But we know what happens when Vinnie goes. So, you know, I think these are, if, if folks can, you know, swing it, it's a great experience for your child. I had minimal reservations about my daughter going to the last one. As a teenager, she didn't really keep in touch, which was.
But she had a great time.
Yeah, she did. But, you know, overall, these are great experiences. I think the kids that go do enjoy them, so.
The reason that we ask for these, you know, to be approved so far in advance is because it does give families more flexibility in terms of payment plans. EF will set an automatic payment plan with you, so it's an automatic withdrawal every month. And it really does give kids and families flexibility. I know a lot of kids who have either paid for their entire trip themselves through their after-school job or split it with families. So it's a great opportunity.
Yeah, and EF, I mean, their platform, they do offer like fundraising, like a friend of mine, her daughter's going to Budapest, and she was, you know, out there trying to find ants online and whatever, GoFundMe her, and she.
Or the, yes, some grandparents, yeah.
Yeah, and that's what I did. I mean, if you know you're going to Greece is, you know, I think my parents bought one of the extensions. It was one of the, so, I mean, it can be done, but it's, I always look at it as probably cheaper to do it this way than the alternative way, which is plan it, send them, have no adult supervision or something like that, so. I'm happy. I'm 100% bonded that it's usual with these trips.
Anybody have anything else? No? All right, I think we're ready to vote. We've done this a number of times, so we're ready. I review a motion to vote to approve the Global Education Trips to Costa Rica 2024, you said, I think?
Five.
25, and Ireland, Scotland, 2026. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. Did you get that?
Yep.
All right, great. Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Vinnie, have fun in Thailand.
I will.
All right, award notification of vote to accept Math Acceleration Academy's grant.
So you, we are doing grants a little bit more formally this year, and I am bringing a grant to you. That is the Math Acceleration Academy's grant. Dr. Ackerman did an incredible job writing this grant, and Norton has been awarded $194,792. And I'll give Dr. Ackerman a minute just to explain the program to you and what it's going to look like.
Thanks, Jen. So I think the committee is aware that in the past, we've had summer acceleration academies to help close gaps created by the irregular learning cycles in the last few years. And so DESI also has offered these and continues to offer them for February and April vacations. And essentially, what they are, this is targeted specifically towards math, and it's a week-long intensive math program. So we are going to be hosting it at LGN. As of today, we have 90 students that have signed up. I know it's hard, so, because not a lot of students want to give up their February and April vacation to come and have math instruction. But it is five hours. It's individualized. It's personalized. It's really data-driven. So thank you to the teachers and administrators that have really gone above and beyond to put together all the data. We just finished interviewing for Teaching Power Positions Program Coordinator this afternoon. And we hope with an affirmative vote from the school committee to formally move forward as soon as possible.
This is for elementary?
Elementary, middle, and secondary.
Oh, okay.
So there'll be three sections, excuse me, two sections of every grade 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. And believe it or not, we did have high school to sign up, so.
Really?
We did, a few, yes.
I'm happy with 90.
Yeah, that's amazing, right?
That's a big number, I thought.
So, and then we'll offer another, you know, we'll do the same thing for April vacation, then.
So this grant is for the, just this, this year, right now?
Yes. For February and April, it also covers transportation to and from, as well as breakfast and lunch.
Oh, wow, okay.
So there'll be a specialist period during the day. There'll be a nurse on site, and there'll also be a school adjustment counselor available in the event of a need.
Okay. Great job getting that one.
Thank you.
That's awesome. Does anybody have any questions?
What are the hours?
It's approximately 8 to 2, 2:30. So depending on the bus schedule, so we're going to be getting the student list to the bus company tomorrow, Monday. They'll devise a route, and it will function very much like a typical school day.
And how were students selected, or was it open to anybody, or?
So the language of the grant really wanted it to be data-driven and specific. So we started with, based upon our STAR scores and our MCAT scores, where appropriate, the most needy students. Additionally, on the form, we also included a component for teacher feedback because teachers can provide a texture and a context to those scores. And so we collected all that information first at the building level, and then it was shared with us in the Office of Teaching and Learning. And then we made those recommendations and sent out those invitations.
And is it for students that are on, on IP's and not, like, just open to all?
It's open, right. So if there's a demonstrated need based upon the data, students, whether they have an IP or not, are invited. And so we also will have six paraprofessionals in both February and April to help with the support component of making sure that kids get what they need.
Anything else?
My only question is, when we do these grants, just such a random number, do we put in like a budget for it? And then do you kind of approve the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
So we do. So like, the way that the DESI grants work is they will give you a budget spreadsheet, and they'll ask you, based upon like your quantity of teachers, your estimated transportation costs, your estimated food costs, to try and give them a number. Typically, they come pretty close. You know, sometimes there'll be some minor changes along the way, but they've been pretty consistent about that process.
It also will depend on how much money they have for this grant program, how many districts apply, all of those things, so. Anything else?
Nope.
All right, do we have a motion to approve or accept the Math Acceleration Academy's grant?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great job. Thanks again.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, review and vote on capital improvement plan?
So the capital improvement plan is the same that you saw last week, last meeting. We just, like, need to vote on it. We just like the two vote on it. It is still the elevator, the second exit entrance, and the curriculum. There's no changes.
Anybody have anything?
No.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the capital improvement plan as written?
Certainly.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And then discussion on FY25 budget process?
So we wanted to make sure, we added documents to this packet since you saw it last, at our last meeting. And we wanted to make sure that we answered any questions and had discussions that were important to the committee before we share this information with the joint meeting tonight as well. So as you can see, we included our mission and vision and core values, along with some basic data about our schools. That's just quick and digestible for you. That in districts per pupil cost, that's a 17, 697. I also noted down below that about $3,031 of that is considered fixed costs, like insurance. So that was something that we had discussed the last time. And the current amount of state funding that we are receiving from Massachusetts Department of Education is $13,029,000. That is the amount that we receive this current year. You'll also note on the Level Service budget page that we added, go ahead, Nick.
Sorry, can you, so that, that number, because we have no idea what that number is actually going to be.
That is currently what we are receiving.
For FY24?
Yes, thank you. We have received very preliminary information about the governor's proposed budget. And in that information, it looks to be that we'll be getting about $65,000 additionally from that, with a total. Let me just pull up my notes here. Which, so it's proposed that we would get $13,255,730 from the state this year. So it's a difference of $65,190, which is about a half a percent.
Now, is that the Chapter 70 funding you mentioned?
Yes.
Glad to see they brought the backup.
So, you know, it's interesting. We just got the breakdown this afternoon. We had the number last night. We got the breakdown this afternoon by community, and it's very similar to the things that we've had, we've talked about in the past. Norton has the $30 per student. Other communities, you see $455. You see dollar amounts over $1,000. We've had this conversation many times before. We are just unfortunately in that bracket of getting the minimum state funding at this time. So, you know, 415 employees overall, 258 teachers. We are the largest employer in our community. So when we take a look at the costs that we have and what Level Services looks like, it is absolutely going to be higher than anyone else. And that's just how math works. So you'll notice on the Level Service page that we added a little bit of a breakout for you in terms of what our mandated education costs look like in comparison to the general education lines. Manded education, we include all components of special education, personnel and staff, as well as out-of-district placements, out-of-district transportation. It's important for people to recognize that mandated educational costs also include our students that are English language learners, the supports that we provide to them, as well as translation services for both students and families. Those are all mandated obligations that we have as a district, so those are included there as well. You'll notice that the, for our proposed FY25 budget, that mandated education line is $15,49,963. For general education, that includes everything else. That is everything else that we do, facilities and maintenance, administration, our extracurriculars and athletics, things that all students access. That is $23,823,467. And we also broke down those percentage costs. So when you take a look, it's a 15% increase to special education on those special education lines, and then 9.84% for general education. And then we also show you what that increase is on the budget overall.
So I just had a quick question.
Yes, please.
In the mandated education, so say we have students that are, you know, have higher costs, and they leave the district or something else, when would we see a savings in that? Wouldn't be right away, would it be the next fiscal year? So like, we've had like a $400,000 student cost, but if they leave the district or something, we wouldn't see that till next year's?
It really depends on the individual situation. So for example, if you have a student that is out of district and they age out, so they're 20, they are now 22 years old, they're no longer going to be attending that placement, we will, you stop paying when they stop going. So you may project out for the whole year, it's going to be $100,000. They finish four months early, maybe you have a $40,000 savings. Or you may have a student that moves in the middle of the year, that is no longer our obligation, so you would see those savings. The same as if a student comes in and then we are now obligated for that cost, then those savings, you know, it's the opposite. It's an increased cost for us. Oh, yeah, thank you. Thanks, guys.
I was gonna say, so if a student moves out, is it, is it an out-of-district placement, let's say December? If they're in a collaborative program, the town that, the city that they moved to picks up that cost.
Immediately.
Immediately. However, if they're in a private school, further regulations, we own that until the next fiscal year. So we would, they would be programmatically responsible, so they would take over the IP and some implementation and monitoring. But we are fiscally responsible until that, until the next year for private schools. So also, it's even more updated based on where they're placed.
I just, Christine just mentioned to me, and I apologize, this is my error. This total state funding, where it says $13,029,000, that's actually the FY23 number. Christine, can you share the FY24 number? And I will change that, so I apologize.
The FY24 is $13,165,40.
Zero, four, zero? Thank you. Sorry about that. I apologize. That's my error.
So then we'd get an extra $65,000?
On top of that, so that's the, the 13 to 25, second.
So why do we, I don't know, this might be a state thing, so who knows, but why do we jump up $135,000 in '24? And then in '25, we're only going to jump up 65?
So they went from, they ended up, the initial, yes, so initially was, they projected $30 a student, and then they gave us $60 a student, which we did not really know until almost August. So that was, again, nice money, a nice little surprise over the summer, but you can't anticipate what will happen.
Okay. I'm thinking, because I'm like, why, would we ever go down? Why would we go down? If we got 60 this past year, why would we go back to 30, just based on whatever you decide?
So 30 is the minimum state aid number. So in some years, they can give you more money based on whatever is out there and available.
Gotcha.
But it will always go back to the 30. That's their minimum.
So that's what we're gonna find.
So, yeah, we could go back to 30, if.
So I mean, currently, right now, they're saying we're only getting 30.
Correct. But in August, you might say, well, the budget passed, and we can give you 42.
Yeah.
Yes. And there's no way to know until the final budget, until the final, um, COVID.
Okay, cool.
Which is well after our budget, of course, and then we have the air.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I mean, obviously, and that's, and that's why there are times when things are cut and you're able to reinstate something during the summer. It's not that we found money or we were hiding money, it's just we were given something a little bit more than we anticipated. The next page is the same as what we shared the last time, how we kind of get to that number. But then Christine and I also wanted to break out the general education and special education lines for you here. So as you can see, that's us at the London Eye last year. That was a really good time, lots of fun, some great kids on that trip. You can see that there are, you know, different line items here. We have the FY22 numbers, FY23, FY24, and then what we are asking for in FY25. Administration clerical, teachers and specialists, all the way through athletics, transportation. You can also see that we are proposing to use $1.9 million of School Choice to offset this budget.
I knew you were looking at me.
Did you feel it?
Of course. I said, I guarantee you, she's looking at me, Sherry just turned, looked at me to see what I'm saying, and I'm like.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it to come out.
Well, and, but I think, you know, the reason we look at Dinesh is because, you know, when we first started this School Choice endeavor, we talked about the fact that it was going to be what, you know, kept us going, kept us current, kept us fresh, new curriculum materials, technology. It was to make us better.
Right. It was passed predicated on the idea that we would not be using it for a recurring budget. We would use it for improvement of our schools. And I, while I'm upset about it, the reality is we now have to use it for keeping our schools afloat.
And you can see, when you look back at the previous year's budget, so FY22, we used, you know, a tiny little bit over a million dollars there. And just a few years later, this year, we're currently using just a little bit over $2 million.
How much do we take in School Choice?
It's gone up, so this year, we're bringing 1.6.
1.6?
But we're using 1.9.
But we carried over some last year and then subsequent years.
Yeah, we've never zeroed out the account.
So what is the, like, projected number then of students in School Choice for this, like, 1.9? Like, is that, are you, like, anticipating we would have?
So that is based on the current numbers that we have right now. So later this spring, before June 1st, we have to have a conversation about School Choice.
Yeah, I don't want to walk away from my question.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No, so we carried over 1.2 last year.
So 1.2?
So we carried over 1.2. We raised 1.6 in addition to 1.2.
Yep.
So we're at 2.8. We're using 1.9.
So roughly $900,000.
Okay.
Right, that's my math. Is that good math?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, okay, so in three, just holding those numbers steady, in three years, we're at zero in that month.
Yeah, so what we do is, exactly, towards the end of the year, if we find pockets of money that we can transfer back to the budget, like, we'll do that, like, that we kind of always end up, we project the worst for that, for that account. But then if we have money left in, like, a salary line or whatever, we put like $20,000 back. So that's why sometimes we think we're going to have like a million.
So, but my, my question or my issue, I think, is, is so we're using 1.9. We used 2 last year. So these numbers are now in our budget. They're recurring, it's considered a recurring expense, right? We're using it to pay recurring expenses. 1.9 is more than we're actually taking in. So we're, we're setting ourselves up for at minimum a $300,000 hole in three years.
Correct, yes.
I mean, I, this isn't sustainable. I'm not sure, but what do you, what do you do? What do you do?
But that's to barely keep the lights on next year, and that's the thing, is we have to think three years ahead.
Correct.
Three years ahead is.
Yeah, but you're essentially kicking the can down the road one way or another.
And my worry is that we are, we are thinking that three years is a long time, and it is not.
It's not, right.
We are going to run into a problem. We're going to run into a, so. I know, I keep saying it, and I know nobody loves the voice of doom.
Well, I think, you know, when Christine and I met earlier this week with Mike Unitz and James, the town treasurer, and we had a lot of these same conversations, and what we had said is like, listen, it's my job to advocate for the students and staff of Norton by telling you the truth of what we need. This is what we need. This is just to keep what we have this current year. This is Level Service. I understand that you are saying this is what you have, but it's important for me to show you what we need. And if we only get three, if we only get four, if we only get five, what does, what does that deficit look like in Level Services?
Well, I mean, based on those numbers, we're barely going to make the mandated budget.
Well, so it's interesting you say that, because I was sitting here, just back in the lab and scribbling out some numbers. And at the rate of increase that we have in this budget, our, in 10 years, our mandated budget will exceed our, what we call general education.
It's currently 38% of our budget.
It will be larger than what we have in general ed. I did not do this math, but this is going to be really curious, to take a look at our actual budget from whatever, last year, assume 3%, 5%, whatever, and see when those two numbers cross. Because when our mandated crosses that 3% to 5% of a year, I mean, that's when it is a nuclear bomb. I mean, you are now saying you cannot educate your kids at all. Not, not general ed that's get cut, like, oh, you just cut a teacher. You have to cut general ed out. You cannot educate your kids at that point. And, I mean, it's, it's obviously more than 10 years down the line, but you've got to start thinking about this stuff. I mean, I always say this, like, I'm not the enemy. Math is the enemy. This, these, these are just numbers, man. It's nothing personal. This is coming. And, you know, I probably, I certainly won't be the school at that point, and I may not, I mean, who knows, I may not be alive, but it is coming. That's what I'm doing.
I mean, really, any of us could see that, so who knows?
I mean, I do think, like, the mandated education piece, you've seen huge jumps based on research, COVID, diagnosed, blah, blah, blah. I don't think that's something that you're going, could be completely wrong. But I don't think you're going to just keep seeing it leveling off. I think you're going to kind of see a level off. I think you're going to see a little bit of a level off. I don't think that's going to switch.
But it hasn't. That's the problem. It's, I mean, the, I would love to think that too, but nothing that I've seen has led me to believe that that's going to happen. That's, that's, if I thought that, I would be much less blue and blue about this. But it is, every single year, it's going to be higher and higher, a bigger piece of our, our budget, every single year. And I've been going for 15 years now, and this is, it's a, it's not a trend anymore. It's a fact. Well, because I think what you're seeing now, Nick, to your point, like, with the research and everything, a lot of the kids that are starting their school age in the next year or so were born during that COVID time. So they have the, those higher instances of needs, you know, in the classroom because of the world they were born into. So it may level off, you know, if we use the 10-year mark, it may be 10 years or more it levels off.
Yeah, I mean, no one's really, really, no, I guess, but.
And that's the thing, is you just can't make predictions. If you look to the next page, where we do the same thing here for special education, you know, between mandates and, you know, the nature and the level of our students that are in our programs, in our districts, like, this is what we're looking at when you look at special education, your mandated expenses. You can also see here, we are using $1.6 million of Circuit Breaker reimbursement to bring down this bottom line as well. So Circuit Breaker is the reimbursement that we receive for students that are out of district. For any student that is out of district over $40,000, yes, we get a reimbursement of that, what the cost differential is. That number changes from year to year. Sometimes it's a 65% reimbursement, sometimes it's a 75% reimbursement. You just don't know. That's also transportation reimbursement that goes in there as well. For example, special education out-of-district transportation, last year, we were told it was going to be 75% or 70%. When all was said and done, we actually got the reimbursements, it was only 57. So that money is something that we can use to offset these costs a little bit.
So assuming 2.5% in, in nine years, the mandated budget would be higher than our actual budget? So, I know, here it is, here are the numbers. Can we go back to general ed?
Yes, of course.
So with the, I'm just looking at, like, obviously the total increase of some, can we just maybe get a little bit more to the public? Teachers, specialists, 10% increase. Like, where did that number land? Because obviously, I know they have an increase in their contracts.
So the contract itself is actually a 2.75% increase, which is very much in line with other local contracts. When you take a look at educators' contracts, though, it's a little bit different because there are also steps and lanes. So for example, if a teacher has been working here for three years, they're currently on step three. They also go, they move from step three to step four in their years of work. So that actually stops around 15. So once you hit 15 years of service, you do not get those increases anymore. Additionally, teachers get credits for levels of education. So a brand-new teacher right out of school will be considered a bachelor's-level educator. Once you are able to add credits, we have master's-level educators, master's plus 15 credits, master's plus 30 credits. So it can't, it's not a straight 2.75% increase based on levels of education and those steps for teachers. And then that is an area there where our educators are required by December 15th to let us know they think they're going to be moving over a column, if they're going to be getting their master's degree, or they're going to make that master's plus 15 column. So we budget that worst-case scenario. And then they don't, they don't finish a class in time, or they.
Start and stop.
Over, yeah, overestimated where they could be, and then, you know, those things, we all kind of figure out over the summer as well.
And I remember 10% anyways, because, well, that'll cut you a bunch, teachers.
We also had four specialists that were in SR in that category, too, that are no longer in there, and we're closer to $100,000.
So that was, that's $500,000 of an increase that was paid through grants previously. Thank you, Christine.
Now, when's the teacher contract go up again?
We have one final year, so the '24, '25 school year will be year three, and we'll have to go back into negotiations.
On SR, it's going to be about seven or seven, maybe six, I think it's 7%. Because it's essentially a third of that increase is, is the SR.
And then if you look at the instructional supplies, earlier tonight, we talked about our capital request and that ELA materials. That is fully in here as well, in case we don't get capital or we don't get the grant that we're looking for. So keep that in mind as well.
So that's assuming we're getting it.
That's assuming we don't get the grant.
Now, will we know if we get the grant by the time the budget's due?
We honestly should know, like, any day now.
We should.
It feels like we were told January, and now they're saying February, so it should be coming very soon.
I mean, obviously, the smaller ones, I don't, not that I don't care about, but I think.
It's more, they're more marginal.
We get it. And then we're both contract services. Why, why the big increase there? And then what about contract services, why, why the big increase there?
So those are a lot of our service contracts for facilities and maintenance, those tend to go up. What else is in there, Christine?
Well, and also, it's, it's worth noting that that's going down for three years.
Yes, 249, 237, 221.
It's actually going down, it's, it's going back up, it's still below. Correct.
Yep. And then the transportation increase, that's something that we have to go back out to, to bid again this year. So we are, you know, anticipating an increase there. And then finally, that last page, I did a few more scenarios for all of us. The first pass, we talked about 5%. So here, I'm showing you what 3%, what 4% and 5% look like, just to have a little bit of an idea of what that would mean in terms of an increase, and then the deficit for Level Services. Just wanted to share those with you before we got into our joint meeting as well.
Does anybody have anything else?
We've got to talk about this again, so.
Yeah, I mean. You don't want to use all your comments.
That's true. Do we have any other business?
The only thing I have to share with you is that earlier this afternoon, we got our special education determination from the Department of Ed. Each year, they go through a series of criteria that look both at performance as well as compliance in the area of special education. They look at annual dropout rates for students with disabilities, graduation rates, as well as performance in terms of academic standards. And we were excited that Norton was placed into the highest category of meeting their requirements. So kudos to Pini and Casey and the work that they do every day in their department. I know we talk a lot about the challenges of special education, but this just goes to show that they're doing a really great job. So this is one indicator of the work that they do. We are having a more formalized, chair-focused monitoring visit in EPL as well.
Thank you, guys. That's it. Anything else? All right, if there's nothing else, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Are we adjourning and going back into sessions?
Yeah, that's what we normally do.
Wait, don't wait.
Yes, yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.